It's September the 29th. We do have a City Council forum present. Councilmembers present are Councilman Morones, Councilman Guerrero, Councilman Castillo. We'll start off the meeting time with a pledge of allegiance. We have American Legion Post 38 Tepscout Troop 114 that will lead us in the pledge. So everybody please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes from September 19th. I do have some comments from the audience. Mr. Miller, if you want to make a comment regarding item 28.
Oh, pass on that. Mr. Mayor, say it for when I do for you.
David, I noticed on your sign up she didn't mark the agenda item.
I was gonna speak after Mr. Miller.
On 28?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion for approval on the minutes?
I think that we approved the main statement.
Motion by Castillo, second by Guerrero to approve the minutes from September 19th. That's presented on there. Say aye.
Aye.
I just paid because I wasn't in the meeting.
Okay. New business consideration action to improve levy and property tax rate in the year 2011, directing the tax assets are collected to assess account for distributed property taxes as hearing levy. And we have several comments from the audience. Mr. Miller?
So that I can keep my comments within my one-minute timeline, I've prepared a formal statement here. Adopting this proposed tax rate, despite the lies presented in this chamber at the public hearings, is in fact a tax increase. No, the rate is not changing, but due to the increases in property value, the same rate means more taxes. The city has the opportunity to keep taxes level and lower its rate, much like the City of Pope has done, and still generate the same amount of revenue, but it is choosing to raise our taxes instead. I'm concerned over several things. Why does the front page of the paper say the questions are not being answered by city officials? Why does this same front page of the paper highlight discrepancies?
That's one minute, sir. Thank you.
I invited Mr. Miller to present this to as my part of my comments, and he comes down and I might turn to discuss. I would like to see him finish it up. And I don't know if he ever gonna allow it, but at the same time, I'm here to represent the city and the citizens, and I know the charter, and I'm not gonna do anything about the charter, but I invited him tonight to explain some other things too in a minute while we're gonna go down to the steps of the publication and stuff like that. It's hard, we all want you to take what you want to do, Mr. Mayor, but I believe that the citizens should know what's going on. I got the same question myself, that you could say I hadn't been here or whatever, but by me reading the newspaper and reading all these comments where people have called and said, or visited and whatever, they want to know answers, and according to the newspaper, Mr. Johnson and some other employees have not given this information. I mean, if we have nothing to hide, why not give it to them?
And that's incorrect, Councilmember.
Okay, wait. Well, that's why I'm asking the question.
This is citizens' input right now, man.
Okay, well, we'll bring it back, but what I'm saying is, I invited Mr. Miller to clarify some things, and I'll wait, we'll wait.
Thank you, sir. David?
I'll wait till Mr. Miller speaks again.
Okay. Janice, Justin?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I really don't need the microphone. Thank you for letting me speak. I usually don't, but I felt it necessary to speak this time. I've come to the council meetings and I hear the discussions, pretty much the same discussions from tonight, there have been in many of the other discussions. My concern is, is that the facts and facts are getting lost in all of the discussions. And whether they're getting lost due to personal agendas, someone being naive, or because of pure malice, I don't know, but it has to be enough. The facts are, you're here to vote on the same tax rate, right? I believe you are. And this is the same tax rate that's been in effect 10-plus years? Is that right?
That's correct.
Oh, right. That's the fact. And as the taxpayer citizens, I'm saying to you-
Janice, and that's one minute.
Okay, but I thank you for leaving the tax rate the same.
Okay, any further discussion from the council, comments from the staff first?
What do you want me to comment on, Mayor?
Any comment?
I can comment on a million things, but the bottom line, sir, is that I've explained, the staff has explained in numerous public meetings, budget hearings, council meetings, private meetings with citizens, that have asked the questions. We got a request from William Gibbs from the Wilson County News in regards to the, what they publicized in the front page, and I will tell you, this email was received Wednesday, September 21st, 2011, at 6:22 PM, after hours. We came in the next day and responded to William Gibbs. Prior to that, the email, that morning that we came to read that email, it said, "Hello, Cherry, I have some questions related to audits been going on with regards to the city's finances. I would like to give the city an opportunity to offer some explanations in writing and its own words outside the context of back-and-forth dialogue during the council meeting." Like I said again, this was received Wednesday, September 21st, 2011, 6:22 PM, after hours, and he said at the end, "I know that your schedule is busy, but I would really need to hear from you on this by Thursday at 3:00 PM." Less than 24 hours later, after we had already scheduled meetings, and civil, because the council has directed staff that they want us to move the city forward, so we had set some meetings with civil to discuss how they have handled their influx of people and their growth from 3,000 to 20-plus thousand in a short time span. And a response was sent to William Gibbs. "I have forwarded a copy of this request to Andy in font of review and guidance. We will meet as soon as we can, and I will get back with you as soon as I can. Best published in the paper. Even an open records request, we have 10 days to comply with that bylaw, not less than 24 hours to answer questions that we have already answered." Some of the questions that were listed in the front page of the paper were questions about audits with Malcolm Gully, about audits with our new auditor, and issues. Those, if those questions wanted answers, this had been directed to the auditor, not to the staff, not in less than 24 hours. To me, you know, I understand that the newspaper wants to publish information, but you know what? The staff needs time to respond, not after hours receiving emails. To me, you know, it smells fishy, it sounds fishy, and then it's in the front page, making us look like we're not complying. Like I said, bylaw even. Open records request, you're given 10 days, sir, not less than 24 hours. So, to me, it was a setup, and I'll say it like it is. And I don't appreciate that. I am a professional, and I present myself as a professional, and I have complied with everything the council has asked me, complied with questions that Mr. Miller, who himself is gonna speak, because it started with the street maintenance tax. We got our auditor up here ahead of time, we did a presentation. That was done. Now, another couple of questions about the publication of the tax rate, those were explained in an open meeting, and now, on the same paper where we were in the front page, in the second page, in the editorial, about other questions. When is it gonna end? We have a new auditor, a new auditor who's gonna come in, is gonna give us some pointers, some advice. We're not doing anything different that the other administration was doing. If we need to improve things, that is our goal here at City Hall, is to improve things. But to be asked constantly a different question, to give me an app, a different question given, it takes time, okay? And that's all that I have to say on that.
The bottom line, Andy, could you tell us what the tax rate is and what it has been for the past 10 years as the-
3.3227.
The tax rate is not changing.
Okay, according to the newspaper, was it published on those numbers or-
And if I may add to that, the newspaper this week stated that it was not published at .3227. I have both copies from the 7th and from the 14th, and the bottom, I'll be happy to hand them out, you can pass them down if you would. I went to the newspaper today and purchased them. It says, "If the governing body adopts the proposed tax rate of .03227 per $100 of taxable value, the amount on this proposed tax for this year on an average home would be $328.58." It's posted twice in both meetings. The adopted tax rate of 3.327. So, Mr. Gibbs was incorrect in his notice stating that it was not in the paper as 3227. It was in the paper twice at both notices.
What issues, this coming year, Mayor? We're gonna address many issues that we can improve on how things have been done before. We are gonna talk about the recorded requirements as far as the state of Texas and the appraisal district, and the taxing portion of it, we're gonna review all of that. We said that this coming year, every quarter, we would do an update on our financials and make adjustments as we needed. We have openly advised the public what we're doing, and what we're gonna do, and what we're gonna improve on, but we cannot do it in less than 24 hours. And that's some of the issues that we are coming up against.
I understand on that, Mr. Johnson, but the only thing is that I have to answer for the people too, and I'm asking you a question, you have one side of your story, you tell another side of the story, but when, I've been with Mr. Miller, and I'm at, you know, the way he chose in the papers, and one that really caught my eye was September, I think it was 2010, how we ended up getting, in 15 days, we got how much more money was earned, Mr. Miller?
In the month of September of 2010, the city reports $635,000 in receipts of sales tax.
And that's one of the things that I'd like to mention as well. It's been said over and over, it was done in a report on the paper, he's made comments in the paper as well, that we're not giving him information, and that we're not giving him what he's asking for, yet repeatedly, he puts that information in the paper.
But we're talking about right now, Councilman, is this tax rate.
Well, this reflects, Mr. Mayor, reflects upon the way we do the budget too.
The sales tax? The actual items is the property tax rate.
But doesn't it reflect over the budget?
The budget's been improved.
One last comment here.
Yes, sir.
On my behalf, on the city's behalf, on the city administration's behalf, every year, our budget gets audited by a certified public accountant, okay? And one of the issues is, I am not a certified public accountant. Mr. Miller, are you a certified public accountant? I've got a big question. Thank you, sir. That's all that I have, sir.
The recommendation from the staff?
Our recommendation, sir, is that we approve the tax rate of 3227. Our constituent liaison will read the ordinance as it needs to be read. We're not increasing tax rate of the city. We do not control, as we have said, the appraisal district and how they approve, how they appraise the value. Every dollar that we utilize is in our budget utilized accordingly.
So, the appraisal district has our house at 100,000, and all of a sudden, they say it's gonna be 200,000. Wouldn't it make more money? Might it number? Or must that number have to be adjusted?
Yes, sir. Mr. Rose, I'd like to bring to your attention that something that was given to Mr. Miller has been brought up in the report, but you haven't had a chance to see it. The average value of a house in the city of Florisville, not Wilson County, but the actual city of Florisville, in 2010 was $106,700. The average price of a house for 2011 is $105,778. So, the average value of a home in Wilson County, and I got this from the appraisal district, the average value of the house within the city has gone down from last year to this year.
So, by the numbers, is the property tax, are we gonna pay more or is it gonna stay the same way we were at? We actually don't pay more, eh?
No, the tax rate is not changing, and the overall average value, and that's what we use to create our tax rate, is an overall average value. And the overall average value of a home within the city of Florisville has gone down almost $1,000 from last year to this year, which would mean, relatively speaking, on average, the taxpayers would be paying a bit less, yes. And I can't say for one house individually or another, but on average, which is where we come to do our tax rate, it would be less.
And that was reported in the Wilson County News as far as the other entities and their increase in property values, and Florisville being the only one whose property value is decreased. We've got more businesses coming in, but that's still not in our tax rate this tax range.
Any other discussion from Mr. Morones?
So, the estimate is when we vote, it's not gonna go up?
No, sir. The tax rate has been the same for how many years, Mr. Johnson?
Since 1999.
Since 1999. You voted on this tax rate last year, but it-
No, I don't wanna say, what I don't want is to raise the tax.
We're not raising it. It's the same tax rate since 1999.
And it was published, published side of the highway? Can you explain, Mr. Miller, on how it's supposed to be? I just wanna make sure, like, I know somebody told me, Cherry knows the steps too, I wanna hear Cherry's step, and I wanna hear Mr. Miller's step.
Yes, sir.
And it's nothing against the city, I just wanted to clarify for the citizens of course.
Yes, sir. No problem, sir.
We appreciate that, and we have no problem with explaining.
That's what I want, information, Mr. Moore.
Can you back up here a little bit?
I'll give you one minute, sir.
Let him explain.
I tend to explain.
Go ahead.
Chapter 1 in the Truth in Taxation, the very first sentence says, "Creating a budget and adopting a property tax rate to support that budget are major functions of the governing body." So, the budget and everything within it has a direct reflection upon this property tax rate. Specifically, the requirements, if the proposed rate, whether it's the same rate as last year, double the rate, half the rate, if it generates more revenue on the same amount of property as it did in the previous year, certain steps must be followed. And that measurement is the effective tax rate. It is also compared to the rollback tax rate, which gives the voters some additional rights. The effective tax rate published by the appraisal district is .3183 cents. The rate you are proposing is a little less than a half percent higher. That means that it's generating more revenue on the same properties, whether the average has changed or not. And if, in fact, it is that, the requirements of the tax code require the taxing entity to do certain things. Once that comparison has been made, the governing body must vote to propose that tax increase, even though the rate is not changing, it is a tax increase. They must publish two quarter-page ads that include that information. The quarter-page ads did, in fact, include the proposed tax rate, but they also said last year's tax rate was 16 cents, and the effective rate was 16 cents. Then they hold two public hearings. In those public hearings, they need to announce the date and time of when that vote, final vote, is going to occur. After that second public hearing, they're to publish a third quarter-page ad, announcing that public hearing, and then do the vote. Specifically, there's a paragraph in here that I read tomorrow earlier today, says "The local government code requires cities and counties that are proposing budgets that raise more property tax revenue than the preceding year's budget to include the amount of that increase in large type on the cover page of the budget." I haven't seen that. That page must also state the amount to be raised in taxes on new properties. That could not be included. The notice of the budget hearing must contain this information as well. The proposed budget must be posted on the unit's webpage. In order to adopt the budget, the governing body must take a vote on the budget separately from its vote on the taxing, and its vote on the tax rate. That comes right out of the Truth in Taxation book.
Now, Cherry, can you explain the way?
Um, one of the things I agree, Mr. Miller, you've done a great job. I really applaud you for going through this and reading through this, because as I said in the very first meeting, it is difficult to deal with. It's difficult to understand, and it's difficult to deal with. The numbers are not easy. It's not an easy thing to do, so I give you credit for at least attempting to go through that. With that being said, there are a few things that Mr. Miller left out. First of all, in good faith, did we not process, did we not post in the very first posting the information that the appraisal district gave us? Yes, we did. In good faith, did we not post two meetings in the newspaper, two notices that gave a tax rate that's being adopted on? You've got copies of the newspapers there. We did give that information. We did do that. We did post that we were having this meeting tonight on our website. It was on our website, it was in Wilson County News, got tons of blog hits, we all love that. One of the things he didn't say is that it does say in the Truth in Taxation book that you must adopt the budget prior to adopting the tax rate.
Let me read that.
I heard you talking about a budget being adopted, but that the budget has to be adopted before the tax rate is adopted.
Yes, I was clear on that.
Okay. Other than that-
Any other questions, Council?
We did, and in good faith, we did take every step that is required by law and truth in taxation.
Any other questions, Council?
Any other questions, Mr. Moore?
A couple of points on this budget and on this article. No, I'm not a certified public accountant, but as I look at the audit that the city has, and in the summary-
Jim, please limit your comments to the tax rates.
As I read my first statement, the budget has a direct impact on the tax rate. It is the basis for the tax rate. This has a great deal to do with that. Specifically, Mr. Gully sticks for 2010 sales tax, $1,020,774. He includes city sales tax and street maintenance tax standard. In every budget-
Please, talk about the property tax rate.
I am. In every budget since then, since September 12, 2010, that are posted on the city's webpage, if you look at 2010, 2009, 2010 actual figures, the city is reporting it received $1.4 million in sales tax. That is the difference of 30-
Jim, roll back to the property tax rate of .3227. That's what we're talking about right now.
Okay. The property tax of .3227 is based on this proposed budget. This proposed budget has made projections based upon the history in this budget. If, in fact, the history in this budget is incorrect, the tax rate is not near enough, because we're not gonna be able to meet those projections.
So, are you suggesting we raise taxes, Jim?
No. I'm suggesting that we look at a real budget that matches our audits, so that we can make some real projections. And I'm saying this budget has got some huge flaws in it, according to these audits.
Are we disagreeing, Mayor?
Yeah, I understand.
One more time, we've discussed what audits and operating budgets and how they're different. Again, a certified public accountant audits our finances.
But, Mr. Johnson, if I know it takes 10 days, whatever it takes, the time it takes, I just want some kind of clarification to where the citizens and Mr. Miller, I mean, I don't need to talk to them, but in paper, show them where it is. Because the way I see it, I see it right, I mean, the way you, I really haven't asked you-
Yes.
-the paper trail, but I'll ask you for the paper trail this week or whatever, but-
No problem, sir. We had our new auditor up here that explained and did a presentation on the street maintenance tax, and explained to Mr. Miller, and he still disagrees with her. But we, I will do, you are my boss, and I will give you the information.
And also, like I say, I mean, I don't wanna, I'm not here rocking the boot, I just want answers to the people and-
Yes, sir.
The answers for the people, Michael, is that we're keeping the same tax rate that we've had since 1999. The same, I see Mayor and I read this in the back, we've had the same tax rate since he was the mayor. Same tax rate.
But what I'm saying is, Mayor, what I'm trying to get at is, and you do your hands and we wanna do it, but I'm here, if somebody asks me something on the street, I'm gonna try to get an answer. That's what I'm telling you. But, uh-
Mr. Rose, may I assure you that we have given Mr. Miller and any other taxpayer, but we haven't had one that has come into our office, other than, we are currently working on two open records requests for the Wilson County News. Other than open records requests, not one, not one citizen has walked into the city manager's office and sat down and said, "Would you please sit here and go over these numbers with me?"
Well, that was clear, man.
And we have no problem with it. Here's where you have to look at, like Mr. Johnson said, he's not a CPA, I'm not a CPA. I was not about to send an email back to Mr. Gibbs with information that I can honestly say I understood, which is why I forwarded it to where we need to get the answers from. We will get with the CPAs, we will-
But even with all that said, Mr. Morones, the agenda item talks about our property tax rate, .3227.
And we're not increasing.
And we're not increasing the tax rate. That's published information, Mr. Miller has acknowledged that.
We're not increasing the tax rate, but you're getting more money because our values have gone up.
We are, ma'am. The city is.
The city is getting more money because you save the same money.
More the services that you give.
Now, you need to justify why you're getting more money this year than what you had last year, because even without raising the tax, the mileage rate or the taxes, you are collecting more money. All we wanna know is, what do you guys do?
Public meetings were held for those specific reasons.
We had budget workshops since-
Two public meetings were held for those reasons.
We had budget workshops since June, I remember.
I was at both the meetings, and Eddie was like, "No, we're talking about the mileage rate, we're not talking about the budget."
You said in our budget meetings too, ma'am, and we're discussing-
I was in one budget meeting.
But we're discussing where that money was going, how it was-
And we all have public input there. I'll sit around the table and talk, and we sit next to each other.
Counsel, is there any further discussion? David?
With all due respect-
Yes, sir.
Do you know whose numbers are correct? Malcolm Gully's, the new CPA you hired, or Mr. Johnson's? Whose numbers are correct? They're all correct.
They're all correct, sir.
They're all correct. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. But again, David, the tax rate we're talking about today is .3227. I think what Mr. Gully reports that came out of the newspaper were referring to a sales tax.
Street maintenance tax, actually. It refers to several different things, but that's again, sir, our entire budget, and this is an operating budget, what we utilize for this year, what we have worked on.
There never have been any discrepancies in our budget. I think the council should be very proud, we've maintained the same tax rate 10-plus years. We've been very conservative in our spending. Contrary to other entities in the county, they have increased their property taxes. There was another entity that decided yesterday to increase their property taxes. We're not increasing our tax rate. I understand that the values may go up, and that it does bring more revenue to the city, but our tax rate is not changing. may go up, and that does bring more revenue to the city, but our tax rate is not changing. Can you imagine what will happen the day that we have to increase taxes? Jim, let me ask you a question. Wilson County was, uh, increased taxes yesterday. Were you there?
No, sir, I wasn't.
Okay. And that was an actual tax increase. We're not increasing, that's increasing value and increasing the rate. Ready for vote, Council?
Uh, let me make one comment. Uh, I met with Jim a couple of times, and he showed me some figures, and he had the questioning also. Uh, Jim and I got together with the city manager and Cherry, and we went over some figures because Cherry and I both had some questions after we, you know, saw the figures that Jim had, dealing with the street maintenance, and there was quite a bit of difference. But when we got with Andy, he showed us where the difference was. Uh, I think they only, the budget only showed the money used in the street maintenance. What wasn't used was put into the savings. So actually, the, the monies that were, that were shown that weren't there by Mr. Miller, in fact, we had more because of the interest that it was drawing in, in the savings. So, again, we, we, one of the reporters, I got a hand when he called us a bunch of roaches. I'm not a roach, you know? And that, we're up here trying to do what we can with the information that Jim has. You know, when Jim came with his numbers, I, I spent time with Jim and, and, you know, he had it all laid out. And I looked at his numbers, and of course, I came and questioned Andy, and he showed me where the differences were. So that, when you get bombarded with, from both sides, you, you know, you have to say, okay, enough is enough. So when you get auditors coming with the figures, and, and they give us the numbers, and, and I don't think she's saying anything that was out of, you know, that we were all... And then again, I hate to say it, but during the budget meetings, certain council members didn't show up on certain, certain meetings, so they get left behind. They don't know what's going on.
If you talk to me, I'm going to take it.
You want the only one, the only one. But it seemed like tonight you were asking some questions, that you were dinner, you were, you know...
I have to take it. I have to take it.
But, but we're here to serve the people, and, and we, it's not like we weren't listening, Mr. Miller. I took the time. Uh, but, and then I came to the city manager, and he had his, his input on it. Yes, sir, Mr. Miller?
I appreciate you taking the time, and I think the point in this whole thing has been missed. It's not the street maintenance tax. It's not the sales tax. It's not the tax rate. It's what you're sharing with the public is not matching up. What you're telling us is a budget, and then it is saying, oh, this is the budget, but doesn't tell us about these magical savings accounts that suddenly appear. And the numbers that you're showing us on your webpage don't match your audits from either audit.
But actually, I, Jim, it's regarding the tax rate. You know, there, there's something not matching on our budget or on our website. The information is correct. We're talking about the tax rate. Counsel, I think we're ready for a vote.
We'll bring it back for discussion on the next, uh, meeting, and, and, you know, things. What I want to do is, not just, again, we just want answers. That's it. Whether Mr. Miller's wrong, or the Johnson, or the city is wrong, we want the answers. And I don't know what, you talked to Karen about the savings or this. I know that the newspaper had come with Mr. Miller. I mean, we have nothing to hide for the city of Florisville. Let the newspaper go in there and take its money. Why was he thrown out?
I passed into leave because this meeting was...
Well, it was public. It's public record.
Well, but you were, you weren't aware that the newspaper was going to be in there, and other council members weren't aware.
What do we have to hide from the Johnson?
We have nothing to hide. We have nothing to hide.
Numbers, numbers that are going to be for the city of Florisville, tax rate.
And what I can guarantee you and Mr. Miller, that this coming year, the next year that our budget is presented, it's going to be mirrored after larger cities that provide their citizens with every single piece of information that they've got. And that's my guarantee to you and to Mr. Miller, that we're going to improve what has been done like this for, forever.
But that's all we have to do. Like I said, I just want the city, the citizens to know what's going on.
And that's...
And we have a hundred thousand savings. There's a hundred thousand reported right here on the, as I said, we don't have to report it on the, on the budget, but it'd be nice to put, hey, we have...
We're going to, we're going to strive for it.
That's right. Um, Councilman, we are taking steps to improve the reporting methodology, not just on, on the budget, but how the city operates. And we have, in that respect, we'll be discussing that later in the meeting. As I've met with our city attorney several times, and I think that next year you'll see a very different budget that will, the reporting structure will be different, and so it'll all be laid out differently. And again, it's the reporting methods that is used. It's not that anyone is taking money. We have looked at the number. We sat with Mr. Miller, um, and as John mentioned earlier, and I think that we do need time to be able to improve the process that is used in everything that we do for the city.
And it don't mean nobody's saying that anybody took money, but if the money's over here, it is for the roach. We use it for the roach.
Councilman, it's been implied, so I might take great offense to that. So having said that, um, what I would like to do is move to approve the total tax rate because that's what we're doing right now. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And we will have the...
The ordinance, the ordinance.
The ordinance.
We have, I'm sure.
Yes, and we'll, we'll be adopting these in, in two separate items.
Yes, ma'am.
So I need to read the...
You don't need to read the, you don't need to read the ordinance with the INS separate.
It'll actually be read twice.
Remember what one?
You go to the right.
We, the city council of the city of Florisville, do hereby levy or adopt a tax rate on $100 valuation for the city for the tax year 2011 as follows. Point 1627 for the purpose for maintenance and operation. Point 6, 1600 for the payment for principal and interest on debt of this city. Point 3227, total tax rate.
Is there a second motion?
I second.
Motion by Castillo, second by Guerrero. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries two, one.
That says, could you reread that again? Because we need two votes on that.
Thank you.
That was one. For which one?
Yes, that one.
Say one again.
Yes, that one. It was for the purpose of the maintenance and operation, and now we have to elect to adopt the interest in debt. Okay. We, the city council of the city of Florisville, do hereby levy or adopt a tax rate on $100 valuation for the city for the tax year 2011 as follows. Point 1627 for the purpose for maintenance and operation. Point 1600 for the payment for principal and interest on debt of this city, and point 3227, total tax rate.
This is for P and I.
Motion by Castillo, second by Guerrero, to approve the tax rate, total tax rate of 3227. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two, one. Next item. Uh, I really want to encourage everyone to, to look at other cities and their tax rates. We should be very, very proud. Our tax rate is, is really, for our city our size, amongst the lowest in the state of Texas. You know, I know there's some confusion regarding the valuation and the tax rate, but our tax rate is amongst the lowest in the whole state of Texas for our city our size, and we should be very proud of that.
But if something's working, why break it?
Exactly. We didn't, we didn't change, we, you wanted no money.
You changed it according to, because you still will make money, like Mr. Miller said, and you need it. We're still the city.
But the rate is the same money.
We're changing, we're keeping the same rate. All right, next item. Consideration action to review and improve correction deed between Florisville and Florisville Masonic Lodge, Lou.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is somewhat of an administrative item. Could have been handled by the manager, but since parks and recreation have been a matter of major concern to the council, uh, I was asked, this was brought to our attention to the manager and my attention by Mr. Fuller, and what the Masonic Lodge wants to do is to correct a previous deed which was executed by the lodge and by the council. This has to do with the Masonic Park that we refer to as the youth park on, on the route going to the show barn. And in the previous deed, the conveyance conveyed the cemetery to the city, which was not intended. And what the conditions for the, having the use and the benefit of the park is, is that we maintain the cemetery, but it's not to be conveyed to us. So what I'm asking you or recommending to you to do is to correct the previous deed to reflect tonight that the cemetery itself has not been conveyed to the city, but its maintenance is part of the city's obligation in consideration for having full and complete dedicated use of the park itself.
Okay. Any discussions, Counsel? Has everybody had a chance to read the, the deed? If not, let's entertain a motion for approval. There's no questions?
I make a motion to approve the correction of the deed in Florisville and Florisville Masonic Lodge.
Motion by Guerrero, second by Castillo, to approve the deed between Florisville and Florisville Masonic Lodge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries three, zero. Consideration, consideration and action to reauthorize an internal agreement between the city of Florisville and Wilson County providing counties with ability to use Florisville council chambers to hold court. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir. There is an interloper agreement on file dated, uh, January 28th, 2000, between Judge Marvin Queeny and Mayor Raymond, I mean, this at that time, for the county to utilize our, uh, council chambers to hold court. And as we know, the issues that are going on with the courthouse, it has been condemned, and, uh, they needed a place to hold court. They're going to utilize the justice center, but they, uh, they talked to me about possibly getting the council approval then utilizing here. Uh, today, was it today, Cherry, or yesterday?
Yes, sir. I'm scheduled to message on Tuesday, Thursday. I'm sorry.
Uh, District Judge, uh, Don Naradas, uh, asked, uh, that they were at the justice center, and it was a little crowded. They wanted to try it here and see how it worked out, but if it was not sufficient space, they asked that they could utilize the events center to hold court out there. So I don't, I, I hope I recommend that this interloper agreement be adopted again, uh, with the stipulation that, uh, that it's not big enough here.
Any council discussion, questions? In the need of, uh, since, or, uh, Wilson County is going through some repairs at the courthouse and finding some restoration, I think we'll approve the interloper agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve, uh, we authorize an inter, local agreement between the city of Florisville and Wilson County to provide the county with the ability to use the Florisville council chamber to hold court.
And also, uh, add the Florisville events center.
And the Florisville events center.
I'll second. Motion by Castillo, second by Morales, to establish or reauthorize an internal agreement between the city of Florisville and Wilson County, providing the county with the ability to use the Florisville council chamber and events center to hold court. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and what carries?
Mr. Mayor, my man, just record that's at no cost.
Well, that wasn't part of the motion, sir.
Does the bill come later?
Yes. Like the one for the school.
Okay, Council, this is the time of year that, uh, we start finding our council meetings around the peanut festival, uh, Thanksgiving next month, and then Christmas the following month. Uh, we need to schedule a date for the October city council meeting. Margaret, do you have any recommendations?
Thursday, October 20th.
Thursday, October 20th. Any discussion, Counsel? Motion to, uh, set the date for October 20th?
I make the motion to schedule Thursday, October 20th, as the date for the October city council meeting.
Motion by Guerrero, second by Castillo, to set the October date, uh, October 20th? Will the next city council be all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero. The next item is closed session, executive session pursuant to 551.074, the Texas Government Code, Personal Matters, to deliberate appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee regarding the city manager. Will need a motion going to closed session?
I make a motion going to closed session.
Motion by Guerrero, second by Castillo, to go into closed session pursuant to section 551.074. All in favor, say a fine.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries three, zero. The time now is, uh, 7:49. I'll ask our, uh, city secretary and our city attorney to join us now, and, uh, we'll be calling our city manager in just, uh, just a bit. We're not out here yet. The council's an open session. The council met since, uh, 7:49. In closed session regarding, uh, section, section 551.074, so the Texas Government Code, Personal Matters, to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee, in particular the city manager. Counsel, have you reached a decision regarding, uh, our city manager?
Yes, we have, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. You ready for that decision?
I agree with the motion.
Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve a two-year contract as presented with an annual salary of $80,000 with quarterly reviews, with quarterly performance reviews.
And you've had two other items, Madam. And that is the document, act, documented action. Organizational chart by October 20th.
And the other council member?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, section 11.
Now, section 11 specifically has been presented, and in the remainder of the volume...
Okay. I move also that we approve the, um, organizational chart, which will be approved on October the 20th, or revised by October the 20th, as discussed, and also...
Lou, uh, that should already inform a motion of, uh, regarding the contract.
Correct.
With those privates, there are those components.
Yes, with those components. So we're approving, we're approving, making a motion to approve the contract with those components.
But we have a discussion, a discussion before, to say, why, what, in what way, or, I can remind out to...
Yes, let me just, let me hear the motion, and we'll go into it for a discussion.
Do you have any review? Do you want me to do it again? Okay, so the two components were the org chart, right, and the employee?
Employee and...
And, okay.
Okay, is there a second, uh, motion?
I second.
Motion by Castillo, second by Guerrero to, uh, I'm sorry, why don't you want to have a discussion?
Like I told Andy, the job, and I told him that he's doing a good job, and, uh, you know, it's hard when you're up here doing a job and, you know, the citizens say one thing, and, and, uh, you know, we got a lot of criticism the first time that, that I believed in him when we voted. The first time I still believe in him, and we kind of didn't agree much back there, but the thing is, when Mr. Pellic was here, he was making $65,000. When he came in here, he got $70,000. So not being mean or anything, it's, he knew what he was going to get. Now, it's not... Now, slowly, as the years go, he can get more, and I believe in him that he can get more. And we're friends, once I get off of here, but I'm doing a job, and I want people to respect me for doing a job. And I had told him a while back too, that I had a problem with $80,000, you know, we compare that, that Seguin is making $100,000. Well, we're not in Seguin, and I'm not trying to be ugly. The same thing, I thought, okay, we're going to compare the city manager, let's compare the city secretary, how many does the city secretary make in Seguin? Let's give Mark it what you deserve. Let's give the workers out there that are out there in the coal, and let's put the shovel, bring them up. And I'm saying that with those $10,000, we can bring somebody up more. And I'm saying, you know, Mr. Johnson, this is the nomination is because I want this $10,000 to be thrown in the pot for those that need to go up. And he says, all that is going to be changing, all that is going to be changing with the process that we're doing, well, fine. But right now, I'm thinking of the other people that need the money more, and I know Mr. Johnson needs money, and I know his family needs money, but it's a hard decision, and I'm just going to say that the only reason I want him to be here, and he's doing a great job, I'm for his contract, but I'm not, I want to vote against because I'm not for the money. And I just want to have that on record. Thank you.
Is there a motion, the second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No? All opposed, motion carries two to one. There be no further business, meetings adjourned at 9:19.